Well, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Bailey, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Backus.
Here.
Councilmember Bain.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Egner.
Here.
And Mayor Winnick.
The mayor informed me today that he's held up in Boston, so he wouldn't get his flight back in time to make this meeting, so I'm it, so bear with me. I think the first piece on the business agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if I could add, and you don't have to if you don't want to, but I'd like to give a moment of silence for Mr. McCain. Thank you. Bailey, do we have some signatures here? Wow, that's gonna be short.
You only want to approve the agenda?
Agenda first?
Yeah. I'm sorry, we need to approve the agenda first. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
The amended one with closed session?
With the amended closed session, which is the way it's written.
I second the motion, approve agenda, including a closed session at the end.
It's already on this, the one that I asked for, as written.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the addition of the closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we move on to the open forum. And the first person I've got signed up here is Ron Schaefer.
Ron Schaefer, Forest Lake. I'm still hung up on this stormwater runoff. I would appreciate it if, when you're gonna spend this money, if you'd publish in the paper what you're spending it on, what the cause, or who the cause is of the problem, and what we're gonna do to prevent it from happening in the future. That's really all I got to say about the stormwater runoff, except we all know it's nothing but a slush fund, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next up, Michael Keane.
Good evening, City Council. I just wanted to make a point about the SRC. You know, I wasn't in favor of the proposal they gave us last time. You know, if you go out and look at what other cities get for trash removal and what their fees are, a lot of the other cities are getting, the city, the police, the fire, public works, get free trash removal from their haulers that are contracted for that, those cities. I don't believe we get any of that. They sign a contract. If they can't live up to their contract, I feel that maybe they should set it out for bids again and redo the whole system again, the process. So, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else wanna speak in the open forum? If not, going once, going twice, gone. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda. We'll go through the consent agenda. You have to go through the consent? Line by line, or? Okay. Well, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as is. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is approve the, approve City Council's special meeting minutes from August 17th, 2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
I want abstention. Second item on the agenda is American Legion, 4th of July, 2019 dates. And I believe we have somebody here speaking on that.
City Council, I'm Vicki Petrie, the Finance Officer up at the American Legion, Post 225.
And I'm Robin Kunkel, past commander of the American Legion, Post 225.
Welcome.
Thank you. So first, I wanna say thank you to the city for helping support our 4th of July community event that we had last year. We feel that it went very well. We also wanna thank you for the $10,000 budget that you had line item for the fireworks from last year. And tonight, on our agenda, we wanted to get our approval, your approval, for the dates for next year. So we had looked at the dates, and 4th of July is on a Thursday, so we wanted to approve July 3rd, July 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, which would be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We would start July 3rd with the carnival usually about 5:00. You know, it wouldn't be an all-day thing for Thursday, but it would be all-day Friday, or Thursday, sorry, Wednesday would be from 5:00. Thursday would be all-day, Friday all-day, Saturday and Sunday. So I would like to see if we would get approval for July 3rd through July 7th, 2019, for the 4th of July festivities for next year.
Can you count it? From the council?
Is that similar practice when the 4th of July has fallen on a Thursday? Is that typically what you've done?
Go over the weekend?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't wanna go before that week.
No, and you wanna go through the weekend, right?
Yeah.
Like you wanna hit, have you found Sunday, that 5th day, to still be beneficial?
It is for our bingo, and we finish off the carnival, they usually'll end up earlier. So they'll end up shutting down by 6:00.
Right.
And then be out of there.
Right, okay.
So.
But have the full weekend.
Chief Peterson's not here this evening. Any issues from the city side of it?
I don't think so. Chief, you know, I've got to speak to the public safety side as well.
No issues with public safety.
Okay. Guess it's approved, and there's no...
Okay.
I'd make a motion, we approve the dates as proposed.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the dates, July 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 7th, for the 4th of July celebration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, I'd say it.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the city, I wanna thank you for all your hard volunteer hours and all the people that work for you.
Thank you.
I know what an undertaking that is, and we appreciate how much you give back to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more item. I know that the city has budgeted $10,000 towards the fireworks for the last couple years, so I'd like to see if you guys would put that on your agenda again to look at funding $10,000 towards the fireworks.
Load the budget up?
Nope, nope. So it's not something you have to decide tonight, but at least put it on your agenda.
We certainly will.
Is it on?
I believe it's still in there. We did, I don't think we made any changes to that line item in 2019's budget, so I'll confirm that, though, and let the council know, but I believe at this point, we did leave that in there for '19.
Thank you.
I think that's money well spent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, SRC rate adjustment. Dan?
Yeah, mayors of the council, just to kinda give a little bit of back history on this, back in 2014, the City of Forest Lake entered into an agreement with SRC to do the garbage collection and recycling collection here in the City of Forest Lake. We do have a single hauler agreement ordinance on the books, which basically allows just one hauler to come through and do all the garbage and recycling collection within the city. And by doing that, we started this process out by issuing an RFP for multiple companies that came in. SRC was awarded that contract. It was a five-year contract, and then rate adjustments within that five-year contract typically have been hinged upon CPI, or 3%, whatever is less, throughout the course of this contract. Typically, we've been seeing CPI increases, I believe about 1.7%, you know, a little single-digit, you know, low 1%, 3%. Does that sound about right, Marge?
Can I comment on that?
Well, I'm just trying to give through, just trying to build up, you know, kind of where the increases have been. A couple of those years, there was actually a negative CPI as well, I think, in one of the years. So on page 166 of your packet, there's actually, it's the Appendix B, which is the pricing schedule, which is kind of the nexus of how we got to this conversation point tonight. So if you look at line 3 of that, it does say that the contractor can propose a rate increase if they have an increase in their tipping fees that they see at the resource recovery facility. Back in 2000, and beginning of 2018, those rates did, in fact, increase for SRC, so you can see in the memo that was prepared for this particular item, a history of the tipping fees at the Newport facility. And you will, in fact, see in 2018, the tipping fees went up from an adjusted rate of $58.17 to $65.18. So what that means is basically, at the point when the tipping fees go up, the contractor can come in and offer and ask for a rate increase to allow for recovery of some of those additional fees that go out as a result of the increased tipping fees. So SRC has approached the city and has made a request for an additional increase in their, what they're currently charging, their customers of Forest Lake for the garbage, for the refuse collection and the recycling. And then again, as kind of was stated during the beginning of the August 9th City Council workshop, right now, you're kinda seeing a double whammy in the current recycling and garbage market. China stopped taking the recycling as they had in the past, so there's been kind of a, the bottom has basically fallen out of the commodities market for the recycling, and you're kinda seeing the increase in the tipping fees, so SRC has kind of been faced with a, you know, a double whammy in terms of increase in pricing. So we didn't meet with SRC and ask them for, you know, what rate increase would they need to, you know, kind of go back to January 1, to get their pricing in a position where they're actually able to account for this increase in pricing. Based on those conversations, they came back with a rate of $495 per month, is what they're requesting for the rate increase. That rate increase is encompassing both the tipping fee increase and the decrease in the recycling market. The city also, as part of this whole conversation, the city also reserves the right, and if they feel that that rate increase is too significant, they do reserve the right to basically go back out to RFP, to see what the market could give them a better rate for the recycling and refuse collection. However, we have, this current contract does expire in August of '19, so we have about 11 months left on the current contract. So again, we met with SRC, it was basically give us your final, what you would need for a final rate increase, so we don't have to kinda deal with another CPI increase, say, January of next year. This would be the final increase that they're offering, or requesting. Again, that number was $495. During the August 20th Council workshop, some additional information was requested during that workshop. First of all was, what are the actual tipping fees being charged? And then, they also was requested SRC to provide some background information of just the differences in the rates that they're getting charged for the delivery of the recycling materials. So you'll see on page 1 of the memo, which is actually, I don't have it keyed up in my online packet here, just bear with me one second.
Page 97.
Page 97. You'll see, there's a chart there that is the history of the RNE Center tipping fees and hauler rebates. This was taken directly from the tipping, or the Newport facility's website, so this is straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak, in terms of what the tipping fees and the rebates have been since 2013 through 2020. And if you look at that, you do see the rate increase go up from 2017, it was $58 per ton, to $65 per ton in '18. And then again, it's anticipated to adjust again to $69 in 2019, and they have not set rates for 2020 as of yet. Additionally, SRC did provide some background information as to what they are currently being charged for the delivery of the recyclable materials. You'll see in 2017, based on the information that they provided, they had income of $1,835, and they paid out $1,066. So they made, they netted $768. Again, this is based on the information that SRC did provide. Then in 2019, they're showing about $9,500 worth of income, but a payout, they're having to pay out approximately $23,000 worth of fees to deliver that recyclable materials at their, where they take the recyclable materials to. So you have a net difference of, they actually are paying out-of-pocket $13,458. Now again, these numbers are basically the information that SRC did provide, which I also provided all that information for council in their packet. Staff also worked with the city attorney to prepare an amendment to the current agreement, which basically memorializes that rate increase. Again, there was also some conversation at one point about doing, you know, some other contract language changes. What we ended up doing just in the interest, 'cause I know SRC had asked for, you know, this to be kind of, you know, fast-tracked through, because again, if there's, they had a sense of urgency behind getting this rate increase considered, we basically only did an amendment to allow for the potential price increase. So there is an amendment in the packet as well, that does memorialize that rate increase of $4.95, which is again, is the rate increase that SRC is requesting for the remainder of the contract, which is the, from now until August of 2019. I also went through, and I'd be happy to go through any other questions that you may have, but we also did kind of an analysis compared to both open market and other contract cities within Washington County, looking at what that proposed $495, where that would place the City of Forest Lake in terms of, you know, just some, again, back in the napkin math, just to see where we come in line with other communities within the county. And if you look at it, currently, we're about mid-pack with paying $1784 for a 96-gallon container. If the rate increase is allowed, we do move to nearly the top of the list. We are right under Stillwater, within Washington County, for cities that have organized collection. Additionally, if you looked at open market cities, I looked at Hugo briefly when we did the initial analysis of this, current rates, $1784 puts us, you know, near the, on the cheaper side of what we're paying per month. But if you factor in that rate increase of $495, we ended up about solidly mid-pack compared to the open market rates. And the reason why the open market rate was done was just to try to give some background in terms of what the open market, what an RFP potentially could look like. Now, what the open market does not take into account is the fact that, you know, by going through an RFP and going with Forest Lake, offers the hauler is basically a monopoly within there, so conceivably, you know, based in economics, you could see that number in a monopoly go down a little bit, but I wanted to show at least what an open market bid would look like, to see where we landed up. And again, we're pretty much firmly mid-pack if you incorporate that $495 rate increase. I guess with that, I just would, SRCE just an opportunity to, you know, since they're the one making the request, to maybe offer any additional information on, you know, the numbers that they provided to me, or any additional background they wanna provide on the reason for the $495 rate increase.
City Council, I'm Marge Strand, SRC Incorporated. We initially approached this council in December of 2017 to advise you of a 10% increased cost for the disposal of rubbish that was collected in Forest Lake, and that was over eight months ago. And since that time, we've incurred over $40,000 in increased disposal costs. We were put on hold at that time as your administrator was transitioning to another city, and there are other, were other council issues. There will be an additional 5.25% increase for rubbish disposal beginning January 1st of 2019. And that's all been taken into consideration with my request. I've looked at the last 11 months of our, remaining of our contract. In July of this year, we received a bill for recycling of $6,672.44 for June's recycling, single-stream recycling. In August of this year, we were billed another $12,423.09 for the same tonnage. This is an 87% increase from one month to the next. We have no idea where this is going. It could be $24,000 next month. Comparing the single-stream recycling income and expenses of all 2017 to the year-to-date 2018, we've experienced a 1,750% increase in costs. These are all costs over which we have no control. Our contract with the City of Forest Lake allows us a 1.77% increase based on the 2017 Consumer Price Index, which is a measure of the Midwest cost of living. This increase allows us to hire and retain qualified personnel to service this contract, and adjust for operating expenses like increased taxes, fuel, insurance, and general operating expenses. That amount in this request amounts to 30 cents per month, per customer. That's all we are getting. The rest of the money is going to pay expenses that were unexpected at the time this contract was, was left. Now, the number of $495 was calculated based on our bill for June recycling, the $6,672. It has not been adjusted to reflect the $12,000, the doubling of our fees the next month. So if, at the, this time, and for the remainder of our 11-month contract, we're requesting the amended service agreement as drafted by city staff to be approved. I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can.
So I have a, just to get started on questions, I don't understand this. So Dan's memo, page 97 of the packet, is a summary of the information you provided about recycling income versus what you, what you, I'm assuming paid out means expenses for 2018. What is that 2018 number? Is that a year-to-date as of June? Is it?
As of...
And I'm trying to reconcile that back to...
As of July, as of July. The first seven months of the year.
So $18,000 of your paid out for 2018 happened in, 18 of your $23,000 happened in June and July?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think if you look at page 117, that payment is broken down, there's a little bit more detail that was provided in there.
Say that one more time?
Page 117 has a little bit more of the dates of the payments were sent out. It doesn't show the revenue side, but it just shows the payment side that SRC provided. And the total there is $9,056. Oh wait, excuse me, that's payments by, that's the payment side that they received. That is the income side they received. My apologies. And then actually, 118 is the one that with the pays, the payouts on it.
Another issue that we talked about, the Consumer Price Index, when we signed the contract in August of 2014, we were prohibited from asking for any increase for a year. So in 2015, we could not ask for an increase. In 2016, based on 2014's Consumer Price Index, it was zero. We got nothing then. In 2017, we got 8/10ths of a percent of an increase, which amounted to 14 cents. And now this year, we qualify for 30 cents. It doesn't really keep pace with keeping drivers, and we're in the transportation business, when there is a sign for drivers wanted on every corner. I have to keep good people.
Well, there's certainly a lot of volatility in that tipping fee business, that's for sure. Sorting it all out, that's the tough part. But on a five-year contract, I can see where, I don't know how you could even see out that far sometimes on some of these things that are so volatile, tipping fees, and we talked about fuel costs one other time, and that kind of thing, that isn't too much of an issue, but I can see some need for what you're asking for, certainly.
I'll echo the statement of seeing the need. The numbers are ranging from 22% to 28% when the tipping fee increases, about 15%. Tipping fees can't be more than 1/3 of your expense to operate your business, so the percentage request, it just doesn't seem to add up.
It does when you factor in the 1,750% increase in our recycling costs. It certainly does.
So I'm trying to reconcile that same number. How many, how many household units do you have in Forest Lake?
Just under 5,000.
So 5,000 times about $5 increase, so we're looking at about 20, just simple math, about $25,000 increase per month. I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling on reconciling, I appreciate you're getting some increased cost on recycling, but then the tipping fee is, I'm not, I'm not covering that full spread in just trying to estimate reasonableness.
The tipping fee is our cost to get rid of garbage.
Yep, no, I understand. And there's, so there's two components, right, of your request. One is just tipping fee, and the other is the increased cost of recycling.
Right, of dumping that, of taking that to waste management?
Right. I'm struggling to get to the full math, to reconcile all of those differences, but maybe gets me to my broader point, which I mentioned in our workshop last time, which is, this isn't my business, and so it's hard to understand what's reasonable. I mean, the contract is pretty specific of, if there is a requirement, then, or if there's a requirement for an ask, the way that you reconcile that is a bid in the market. And I, that's the only, that's what I, the path that I think we should follow is, you, we need to go to market to see what the, what the right number is. I'm...
When you have a 30% increase requested, that's, that's measurable, and I think that the customers do, an opportunity to go to quote on that. Looking at, seeing out the rest of the contract, if we can find something less than that, that would be comparable to get us to the next year, I'm okay with looking at that, but definitely not a full 28% on that one. That's, that's too big to negotiate outside without having to get another quote.
Even with the numbers that are provided to you, and the knowledge that there's a crisis in my business?
That's what I'm trying to understand, and I'm just not, the, the case hasn't been made, in my opinion. Like where, there's lots of, the number is probably north of where we are today, but to go to the 28%, I'm struggling to get there.
I, like you, am struggling also. Going back to when this contract was let, to begin with, I believe Walters was the low bid. There was a lot of discussion at that time. They were closed bids. They came in as a low bid, and I reviewed that council meeting, and Susan Young is here, she could speak to it. If memory serves me right, you negotiated that you would match that. That was your business, that was your business decision, not, not the city's decision. So I really struggle with, you made a contract, and obviously, the first three years were very satisfying to you. You were granted basically a monopoly on all residential hauling in the city. There's been an increase of 225 residential units. I would assume a business plan would try to interpret, what kind of growth will I have? Because if I don't have growth, I can't cover what is known to be increased costs. Wages go up, fuel costs go up, tipping fees go up. Those, I would have thought, were in your business plan. So to come to the city to make good on what you didn't plan for, I have a real difficult time with that.
Ms. Egner, when Walters came in and made that bid, they were exhibiting predatory pricing.
Maybe that's competitive pricing. I mean, predatory pricing depends on...
It is predatory.
Okay, well...
But that's your perspective, that might have, that was a market bid.
But even if it was predatory...
Yes.
Our taxpayers could have paid that rate if they got the contract. They ended up, for the last four years, paying higher than they should have, the way I look at it. And now to penalize them and say, all right, we accepted this contract, now you want the last year to kick in a little bit more. I don't see it that way.
But you're penalizing me for expenses that I have no control over.
I'm penalizing, I'm not penalizing you at all. I'm penalizing, I'm not penalizing you at all. You made the business plan, not me.
I had no idea that this recycling market was going to do what it has done. I had no way of knowing that, nobody did. And the other haulers, overall of Minnesota, are experiencing the same dilemma.
There's a potential, we go to RFP, and it comes back to bite us in the butt, knowing that the market's higher.
Yeah.
But I think it'd be reckless to even consider a number such as close to 30% without doing that.
Okay.
And if that's where the market truly is, and that's what consumers are gonna have to pay, so be it. But at least we could have a fair representation of what's out there.
I agree. We could find that this is, that the market shows that this is absolutely right, but I think it, going through that exercise is part of our job, because we are making the purchasing decision for, you know, 5,000-plus households, and we give them no other choice.
If I got an insurance quote for 30% more guaranteed, I'd shop around, it'd be ill-informed if I didn't. I shouldn't treat anybody else's pocket the same way. Is there any interest to entertain a, a lower amount?
Well, I don't have any issue with, you know, and granted, these are small numbers, the cost that she's entitled to, the CPI increase, that's a given.
Right.
But to, to come to us and say, "We wanna, we should make up for what your planning shortfall was," I'm not there.
I would agree.
Yeah. Well, my comment was that I, I thought that there was some justification for at least part of it. That's, that was my comment. I'm not saying that, you know, the 495 or whatever, but it just seemed that the volatility with the, the market that was unforeseen, and that, that sort of thing, that four years out on a five-year contract is tough business. I would never, I, I'd been, they'd have to be three-year contracts if I was ever gonna get them.
But that was your choice.
I, I understand that. But I just, that's just how I feel about it.
I think, one thing to kind of help clarify, just what that actual increase is, you know, potentially per resident, and looking at what the recycling, the Newport facility put out, they put out what an average, now granted, this is average, so I mean, there's gonna be fluctuations in this, but they said the average household produces about one ton of garbage per year. So, if you look at that, and the tipping fee in 2017 was $58, so conceivably on the contract end, each homeowner paid $58 toward, towards, you know, the tipping fee. The increase in '18 is $65, so additionally, $7 more for this, a tipping fee. So, if that same household produced just one ton of garbage in '17 and '18, there's a $7 increase, just to get rid of that at the Newport facility. Then if you add in '19, it's $69, so it goes up, $11 total from '17. So, that's just kind of, again, a way to average out, I mean, there's gonna be people who'll pay more than that, and people that generate less, but one ton is what Newport rec says the average household produces annually.
Per, and so that, those dollar amounts you're translating would be a per-year increase?
Correct.
Either $7 per year or $11 per year?
Correct.
So, that's where I'm having a hard time reconciling that to 495 a month.
And then we take that 7% increase on that fee, and you stretch it out to the max of 28, tipping fees, again, have to be marginally 25% of your operational cost. So, I think we're subsidizing other parts of your business to even entertain a number any higher than that.
Okay. You wanna buy me?
No.
The city wanna buy a garbage company?
I don't have any interest in that.
I think we've made the decision not to be in the garbage business.
Say something for a minute here, get your minds back together. You guys settled, we got stuck with a YMCA for a $13 million debt.
Alvin?
The city, wait a minute.
Alvin, the public session's over, please.
I know.
Please?
Compassion goes a long way.
Alvin?
If I was a business, stay the hell out of Forest Lake. Speaking up on her behalf, she deserves a fair shake for what she's doing. I'm the next pricer, 30 years in the industry, aerospace, you can't control the unknown. You guys don't, can't give a damn. Why am I paying seven bucks a month for my utilities, my gas and, my electric meter, my gas meter? Where's it going? Got this 40 bucks a year for this slush, slush of the water thing. This guy's trying to take our business? He's a, I've been here 28, almost 30 years. She's been my provider since I've been here, and she's a damn good job, and it's a fair price.
She has to be, she's the only provider.
If I was her, I'd send them in and get the hell out of Forest Lake. Forest Lake is dead.
Let me give you just a brief history. When the freeway went through Forest Lake in 1964, Forest Lake became a bedroom community to the Twin City area. And at that time, the Hayfler family saw a need to start a garbage company, which they did. Later, they sold it to the Sari family, and they operated it with their children. Two of those people are still our employees. Cameron and I purchased this building, this business in 1985, and have been operating it ever since. You haven't given me anything. We have worked for it, and built it, and earned it, and we had an exclusive presence here until the contract started in 1990. We were the only hauler in Forest Lake, because nobody else wanted the job.
Ms. Drager, can I remind you, you're talking to your customers?
I am.
You are.
I, I don't think I'm saying anything that should be shocking to them. But you haven't given me a monopoly.
No, you literally, by definition, have monopoly on...
We have, I know, I know, by the contract standards, we have a monopoly, but it's because we've built it, we've done good service to the community, we've been active in the business community, we have worked for and built what we have accumulated.
So, you built a business that was able to put a bid on to get the monopoly. So, you have a contract, you have a monopoly in the city of Forest Lake on residential trash hauling.
We have an exclusive contract with you.
Is any other trash hauler allowed to do residenials in Forest Lake?
Well, they are doing them, believe it or not. Ace has a container right across the street from me.
So, that's another issue to be addressed? We have single hauler for a reason?
Yeah, to keep the road traffic down. You haven't had any complaints about our service.
Okay. Shall we start the complaint session? Would you, why do online payments take 10, 10 days to post? I, I, I have been, I have been inundated with complaints, and I wasn't going to open up the complaint session, but I can't let you state on the record, there's been no complaints. There are always complaints, it's part of doing business.
Right.
So, let's acknowledge that.
I'm Donna Proll, I work on the IT and the business side of the company. I've had to take another job outside of the company now, just in order to take care of ourselves. So, I appreciate your complaints, and I've heard them. We keep an online presence with Google as well, so that we can get that feedback, as well as we're always monitoring the calls, so we know that as well. First of all, we started out the company, we took checks, payment, and we accepted credit cards, and then we said, "Hey, we're not a bank, we don't really need to be doing all this, you can send us your checks." So then, we had a lot of press, pressure, we wanted to make sure that the customers had an option to do that, and we set up an agreement with PaySimple. PaySimple is an online payment company that allows the customers to log in, they can set up their bank accounts, and schedule those payments. Now, the problem with this online banking, and I work in the finance industry as well, it takes three to 10 days for a check to clear the bank. And the people who use the system are oftentimes people who don't have money, or they, they're well in arrears, and now, all of a sudden, they, they make a payment, and they got garbage thrown over, and they want us to pick them up. But guess what? Then we, we get hung with their checks, because they, they don't have no money in the bank. Okay? So, we set up a policy, let's make sure that these checks clear. Unfortunately, for all of the 99% of the really good customers, we appreciate, we'd love to cash your check and, and pick you up the next day, it, it can't be. So, in, in hearing these complaints, we're gone, we're starting with a new, as of, I believe, probably the, the beginning of September, we are starting to work with another supplier that will give us faster ACH processing. But thank you, we're not a bank, we're just trying to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to pay. They can always call in and pay with a credit card if they'd like. So, we've made that available to them as well. And one thing that she didn't do here is talk enough about how much it costs to recycle. I mean, they're just, that was completely out of the, I remember, say, the meeting with Walters, and Walters says, "Yeah, we'll give you half of the money." Do you remember that?
I remember, they, they, they'd give us half of the recycling.
Of the recycling money, right. Because at the time, at least you could market your, your aluminum, and your paper, and your glass, and there was something that you would get for it, per ton plastic bale. Now, it's garbage, and it's costing money, so it's flipped, I mean, flipped completely. There is no revenue, it's sucking up anything that there is for operating. And we're dying for drivers, we cannot keep drivers. Seriously, there isn't that there. And I've taken a job outside, so basically, you guys are shutting us down. And if that's how you wanna do it, I'd say, you know, in the RFP, see if someone else can come in and do it for cheaper, because they won't. They're getting $30 a month down in St. Paul. And the houses are right next to each other. We are the furthest county out, in Washington County, the furthest county out from that burner where that, that garbage goes, and we have the longest transportation, and you guys are cutting us to the knees, so...
None of those items that you just mentioned have changed. When this contract was let, all of those were known, the distance to, other than the recycling, the distance to the, that you would have to haul it to that place. All of that was unknown. You knew you had drivers, you knew they'd probably want raises, you knew you had to replace trucks as they get aged.
Correct.
And that's all part of running a business.
Correct.
So, if you make a contract, say, "At this price, I can haul your garbage," that's your decision. That wasn't the city's decision.
I think it was said by Dan eloquently, that, that it was, it built into the contract that we could ask for a request for a increase.
Well, based on tipping fee increases, though, I mean, CPI is granted, you know, or 3%, so if CPI goes up 6%, it's capped at 3. However...
We did, was, was the recycling, was that ever identified as a risk? No, see, that's one of the things with the risk, we didn't, we didn't identify that as a risk. So, yeah, is that our bad? Is that our bad? Yeah.
Poop crap in the contract.
Yes, that, to me, that is one of the things you should know about your business.
Correct.
We're not in the garbage business.
Is there a number between 3 and 495 that you could live with for the next 11 months? As an increase?
I, I'll just speak for myself. I need to see an analysis. I have some frustration over the information that was just dumped over the fence to Dan. Dan's done the analysis on this. You've provided some basic information, but the analysis has been done by staff, and I just don't think it's our staff's responsibility to do your analysis for your rate increase. So, it's really difficult to sit here to negotiate off the cuff of, is it $3, is it 425? What, 495, what is that number? I need to see your analysis. I can tell you what I've seen so far is incomplete, and I'm uncomfortable making that decision for all of our consumers. I fully appreciate you've had some very difficult business circumstances, I'm happy to entertain something that we could determine to be fair, nobody's here to put anybody out of business. I'm just uncomfortable telling, explaining to our residents, "It's 30%, and that's all we can do." I, because I haven't yet seen that support. You need to do, you need to do that analysis for us with...
What more can I do? I've given you every number you've asked for.
You've given Dan a raw data set that he has crafted into an analysis to the best of his abilities? That's not his job.
I don't disagree with anything that he's done.
Here's, I mean...
But I don't expect him to do the analysis of what's, what's the right number. That's not Dan's role.
You wanna come in and micromanage my business, and get into the, the nitty-gritty of the books? I have provided every number and invoice that have, I've been asked for.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make another comment or suggestion, maybe something to think about going forward when you write a contract like this, where you require so much data, and you want it to be, and Mara's sitting here saying that it isn't complete for her, now, all of a sudden, you guys are managing our company, you guys are running it by saying that you need to have the numbers and everything, and you don't believe what's been presented.
Part of the frustration is that...
We're the ones that are coming, asking for a rate increase. It's your obligation to justify your rate increase, it's not the city's.
And I have, and I've given every number that, that has been asked of me.
When was the last time an annual report was provided to Forest Lake as per the contract? That's one of the frustrations. That, that annual report has information in it that council should be able to use to determine basic information to help for future decisions.
You wanna see my tax returns?
There's, the annual...
You know, what do you mean, an annual report?
There's an annual report requirement as part of the contract that helps to line out number of customers, helps to line out information that would then support future business decisions like this.
Dan, have that, has that not been provided?
Not that I'm aware of, not in the format that's required. And we haven't come after, I mean, to be hon, I mean, the city has not, you know, in the past, gone after them aggressively for that annual report either. You know, Washington County gets a ton of reports, and gets that information, but the specific information that's included in that contract, you know, the city has not aggressively pursued that report in the past. I mean, and I guess, just from an analysis perspective, from, you know, when I look at the numbers, when I've gone back through and looked at the numbers, where the struggle point has been, in, in terms of, you know, assessing the reasonableness of the 495 is, there's no direct number for total customers. So, you can't go back through and say, "I can get a tonnage number from Washington County saying X amount of tonnage was dropped off, but I don't know if five customers provided that, or 5,000, or 6,000, or 7,000." That specific number dramatically increases, because if I put 3,000 numbers in, divided by the total tonnage, they're generating two tons, which then, that increase is more significant. However, if it's, if they're generating 3/4 of a ton, that changes the numbers, you know. So, I guess, you know, from the analysis perspective, I mean, that's just trying to drill that down into, you know, on the tipping fee side of it, you know, that's just looking at tipping fees. The recycling market is, I, I did not look at that, because again, I'm not a commodities market expert, I'm not into the weeds on the commodities market. I was trying to look at unknown numbers from Newport, gave me the numbers, it went up by $11. So, I went back through and says, "Okay, $11, based on the tonnage that was generated," I don't have the total customer number per, and the, and the tonnage on an annual basis, so I can't say each customer generated X amount of tonnage. I went back to what Newport provided, and says, "On average," so using just whole cloth averages to start doing the math, saying, "All right, if Newport's telling me that every average customer generates one ton of garbage a year, I'm just gonna say, from a matter of recourse, and they should be paying in Forest Lake, based on just strictly tipping fee increases, $11 more per year." You know, that's just based on the tipping fee increases, has nothing to do with the recycling market, because again, I didn't dive into the recycling market, I just looked at the tipping fee increase. So, I think you can show that there was an increase there. However, I don't know how that impacted individual residents in Forest Lake, because I don't know the number, I don't know the tonnage, I can't get an average Forest Lake resident tonnage. And even in that number set, if I were to get an average, the, the resident on a 40-gallon cart is gonna generate less tonnage than a resident on a 96-gallon cart, so across-the-board increase is gonna penalize the person on the 40-gallon cart. They're gonna pay more of that percentage increase, because they're not generating as much. So, if you really wanna drill it down, I mean, there's, I mean, there's multiple layers that you could drill this thing down, however, at what, I mean, that's some of that's, you're kinda getting in the weeds on it. So, I, you know, number of customers, total tonnage, we at least provide a starting point where you could say, "Here's the impact, the average homeowner within the city." I just had to go back through and try to do some calculations based on numbers that Newport provided to at least get a starting point, which is, you know, that $11, $11 annually if everybody generates one ton.
That'd be a safe overestimation.
I would probably say it's, from, from my looking through this and kind of running the numbers the last couple of days, it's probably, it's a good starting point. You know, you could probably drill it down more, and you may see, you know, that number, it just gonna depend on how many residents are on the 96-gallon cart, because I'm assuming that 96-gallon cart is the one that generates that one ton. If the bulk of the customers in Forest Lake are on 96-gallon cart, it's reasonable.
Yeah.
You know, and again, I could, they can sit there and say, "Yeah, that's the number," but I don't have a number set to verify that, so I'm kind of taking their word that that's the number, and that's why I'm trying to, you know, when I'm doing this analysis, is basically, you know, the numbers are the numbers, but I don't have the full number sets, I'm trying to grasp a little bit at straws, just trying to get a starting point.
So, an annual report would have been your best tool to clearly convey what's going on, and we don't have that?
Mr. Backus, I think I could give you all the information in the world, and if you still call me a liar, that I haven't given you the information that you need, I still think you'd build this down.
You have an out-negotiating tactic, that's for sure.
I sure do. I'm a little bit bitter, after I've given so much of my life and my family to serve this community.
I don't wanna get personal on anything here, there, there's really no room for personal agendas here.
Okay.
Emotions shouldn't be factored in, government's not supposed to be emotional.
No.
What we are trying to do here is, is do things appropriately with ethics, and as I'm looking at your contract, it says you're supposed to furnish an annual report annually by September 1st. If you had been doing that, it would be easier for you to make a case, and we would have a comparison from year to year.
And you know, I'm not sure that hasn't been... And you know, I'm not sure that hasn't been filed. I, it's not on my desk to do it, but the secretary, the gal who does it, I'm not sure that that hasn't been filed.
I can double check our records, but I don't recall seeing one. You know, and if, if I did, I will apologize, but I don't recall seeing that annual report.
It was the basis of information that Aaron, when we talked about this in December, you say it was just tabled. Aaron asked for a lot of additional information. It was this type of information that he was looking for, which tells me in December, he didn't have it.
This report would have been very useful for you today?
Worth looking, worth looking at, but...
It would have been beneficial for you to have that available and furnish that. Um, right now, it's still very difficult.
Mr. Parrish asked, accused us of not having two million dollars' worth of liability insurance. And we have had two thousand dol, two million dollars' worth of liability the entire time of the contract. He also, there was another issue that he came to us about, um, that was bogus.
I'm unsure how that's germane to where we are at right now.
Well, Mara brought it up.
I just would like to, you know, reiterate my side of it. The numbers I look at, I'm looking at like you have this equation out there. I have part of the numbers, but I don't have the other numbers to justify the answer. I mean, I can't compare, I have no idea whether you made a profit, didn't make a profit. I have no idea how many customers you have. I mean...
Where do we go from here?
I agree with Councilman Bain, what she said, that it's up to you, not the city, to furnish the economic data or financial data so that we can make that decision. Right now, all I've got is tipping fees and recycling. And that's it. And the fact that you've been the sole provider for this business in Forest Lake.
To go apples to apples, um, if your tipping fees go up thirty percent, our rates shouldn't go up thirty percent because that's not solely based on your operational cost.
That's not the reason that I asked for the increase. The increase in the, uh, and I gave those breakdown numbers to Mr. Undem.
May I interrupt real quick? The contract is specific to renegotiations based on tipping fees. So trying to honor the current contract is what I'm trying to do.
Okay. But I did give him a breakdown on what the different costs per month amount to.
Correct. I understand, and I understand recycling being, uh, a very sore spot for, for you, business-wise. I own a business, I understand what it, what it takes. But, um, according to the contract, to follow the contract as, as we need to do, uh, the tipping fees are the negotiating point here. And if, if indeed you want to factor fifteen percent, you know, we'd even need to know what percent of tipping fees are, are your expenses in order to find what a fair rate adjustment would be.
Uh, the numbers that I provided to Mr. Undem, um, a dollar and eighty-three cents over the next eleven months catches us up even for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, no, twenty eighteen, for the money that's already been expended, uh, on behalf of the increase, the ten percent increase that we had in tipping fees at Newport. A dollar and four cent per customer per month will be the increase beginning January first of twenty nineteen. Um, estimating the seven thousand dollars a month fee for recycling spread over the next fourteen months adds a dollar and seventy-eight cent per customer per month.
Per this contract, we can't factor the recycling in.
Pardon me?
Per the contract, we can't factor this recycling in.
It's an increased fee.
Does it specify tipping fees?
It allows for the contract to be, you know, a fee increase to be discussed. That was the opener, you know, to get back in to discuss, you know, the contract as a whole. And to be fair, we did, we did communicate with SRC. I said, give us your, what you need. You know, I, I didn't, we didn't try to infiltrate that. We just said, you know, I asked, I said, give me your number. You know, if that's a dollar, if that's five, if that's six. I didn't know what that number was. I said, go back, do your math to figure what you need to make call. And that's what she provided to us in the meeting and at the October ninth workshop. That's where that breakdown was first discussed.
And the CPI gives us thirty cents.
I think we're kind of hung up on the percentage there too a little bit. And, uh, the issue that I see here is if, you know, if it was a couple of dollars a month, five thousand households, that'd be about ten thousand dollars a month increase. And that's what they're paying out in this recycling fee at the moment. It's actually a little more than that. I'm just using that as an example, just one number. I, uh, you know, you can, the contract, of course, is a contract, but...
How, so I agree with, I see your point. My concern is opening it up now to a, a reduction in recycling. Recycling's been a net benefit for many years on this contract and...
Oh, I beg your pardon, it has not.
No.
It never has been.
No.
Or... I don't know that. I, so, I don't know that.
That's a perception.
Now that you're underwater on recycling.
That, that's a perception. But, yes, an assumption, but recycling has never been a benefit.
But according to...
To us financially.
If I remember Dan's numbers correctly, the first three years of the contract, recycling was offset, the increase in tipping fee was offset by the recycling for putting it on a... So it almost stayed even for the first three years.
I don't get your logic there, Ed.
Because if, I mean, I don't have the number in front of me, but the reci...
Oh, the yin and yang from twenty seventeen?
Exactly, no, before twenty seventeen. When the contract first went in, what was the, what your graph started at?
Twenty fourteen, so I did give a history. Twenty fourteen, when the contract was let, actual tonnage, tipping fees were fifty-eight, twenty-two after rebate, is what the hauler paid, per the information I got from Newport. In twenty fifteen, fifty-eight, twenty-two. In twenty sixteen, it was actually reduced to fifty-eight dollars a ton.
So that's what I'm saying, the first three years, it stayed constant or actually went down one year because it was offset by what you got back in reci, in rebates on recycling.
No, the rebates, rebates were...
We don't get any rebates on recycling.
The rebates were not, it has nothing to do, that's just strict, a straight tipping fee. So they charged eighty-six dollars per ton and then they give a hauler rebate back of twenty-eight. So the actual cost was fifty-eight dollars. That's separate from the recycling.
I'm looking at the hauler rebate then.
Correct.
It's part of tipping.
Is that correct?
And we get that, Ed, because we sign a contract with the facility at Newport to use their facility. It is, it has nothing to do with recycling.
But it offset the tipping fee.
No, so the tipping fee, there was an out-of-pocket tipping fee. So the out-of-pocket tipping, so basically, the top two lines on this, you could just basically kind of ignore, but they were, as part of this chart, is, is basically, they were paying fifty-eight in two thousand thirteen, fifty-eight, twenty-two in fourteen, fifty-eight, twenty-two in fifteen, and then in sixteen and seventeen, they're paying fifty-eight dollars. In eighteen, so this year, there was an increase. It went from fifty-eight dollars to sixty-five dollars per ton. Now, that's what the out-of-pocket cost is. So there's, there's like the, you know, the chart, the, basically the fee that they would charge. And then if you, uh, if you sign an agreement with them, you get the rebate, so you pay that reduced fee. So looking at it, since they had the agreement with Newport to haul there, they're paying that lower fee across the board. So there is a twenty eighteen increase, you know. But again, if you go back to the Newport averages, what they provided, so each resident in Forest Lake generates one ton of garbage, you're looking at, you know, on this one, an increase in twenty nineteen from current rates of four dollars, you know, annually, based on the tipping fee there. But they're requesting a twelve-dollar increase to cover tipping fees. You know, and again, that's me using averages from Newport. So the numbers that I'm seeing could be significantly different than this. I'm just trying to average this out. So there's an eight, there's a, approximately an eight dollar and forty-eight cent difference between the request and what I'm seeing, just against straight tipping fees, nothing on recycling. And if you look at, again, at seventeen, you're seeing a seven dollar increase. And again, the request was a dollar eighty-three. So if I do that math, give me one second here. You're looking at, so if, with the seven dollar increase, again, on the average, with every resident generates one ton, there's an additional fourteen dollars and ninety-six cents on the tipping fees, including this contract. Now, I'm not saying that that number wouldn't change if we saw the total number of customers that came forward. Again, I'm just taking the broad average to see where we at on, in terms of, in terms of fees, in terms of increases on this one.
By your own numbers, if each household generates a ton a month, uh, year. And someone else on the board here said that should be twenty-five percent of our cost of doing business? That puts the rate at twenty-six dollars a month.
And I was pulling a gross number out. I don't know what those are. Do you know what the tipping fees are in your expense?
No. Do you know, Rick?
What are the tipping fees?
What percent your operational cost?
Somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five percent.
Oh, I can't say with all due to some really good looking.
You know, that would be a figure which would be really helpful right now.
What else do you want from me?
I mean, I think if you're looking at this from an analysis perspective, to see if a rate increase on tipping fees, now granted, framing this up just with tipping fees is, is accurate, you would need a number of forty-gallon containers, where they generate tonnage-wise, to extrapolate that over a year. The mid-rate, I think it's a sixty-five gallon cart, how much they're generating per year, and the ninety-six gallon cart generated per year, to get your average tonnage generated at each different level. And then you take a look at the increase and then go back and say, you know, based on, we know what the tipping fee increases are at Newport. And then you just go back and say, we know that cost is going up. So if you're looking at a straight tipping fee increase, you know, allowing for that increase to happen, that's the level of detail you would need. But it's, again, I can't get to that level by, without having the number of customers there because I don't know if they're generating, say, ten thousand tons a year. I don't know if that's generated by five thousand, or six thousand, or eight thousand. And those numbers will significantly sway the number of tons per customer, which will then, you know, will change if that tipping fee increase is reasonable or not, or if it's in line with what Newport is charging.
Sounds like all the numbers we're asking for would be typical to a, uh, annual report?
I believe so, yeah.
And you know, my drivers are not secretaries. You know, they're not clerical qualified people. Their job is to drive a truck, pick up garbage.
But, and I'm going to say...
To arrive at the kind of data that you're just talking about takes a computer and every truck and, you know, a weight on every bucket that's picked.
I guess I'm looking at, you know, from my perspective, if you have just brought it to the back of the act of math, so you have ten thousand customers.
No, we have five.
We don't, we have less than five.
I'm using ten because it's an easy number. It's an easy number for me to break down. So let's say you have ten thousand customers. Seventy percent are ninety-six gallon containers. So there's seven thousand customers that are generating ninety-six gallons. You have fifteen hundred that are generating sixty-five gallons and fifteen hundred. That percentage at least gives me a starting point to go back through. I mean, even if I were to say everybody generates the same amount, at least I have a number to say, your total tonnage out is ten thousand tons and you have ten thousand customers. Everybody's generating one ton at that point. That's what I'm trying to get to, is where are the average homeowners generating? I don't, I can't do that with the math I have. I'm missing a big part of the equation, which is the customer number.
And the mix.
Less than five thousand, a little less than, and it, it varies every day. In the winter, we lose snowbirds. In the summer, people go to the lake. Um, we don't have the same number of customers every day.
But you, would you at least have like a monthly average customer? Because you know how many you bill out? I mean, if, I could average it out.
Just under five thousand. Just under five thousand. I don't have the apartment houses.
Wait, go on.
They're all hauled by the bigger, bigger haulers. I've got the single-family residents. Look at your, your sewer bill. I mean, you know how many people you've got on, on individual homes, one, one-owner homes or single-family homes in the city? How many do you have?
But not all of them have garbage. I mean, that's what I'm saying. There's residents that don't, they, they self-haul. They have that right to self-haul.
Where do we go from here?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, this is not...
This is not, we're not going to be productive anymore.
Dan is doing a fantastic job of helping to put the numbers together, which is not his job.
I guess where I would leave it right now is, Dan, what information, what more information do you need to complete the equation?
For me to complete the equation, I basically would need not just a number of less than five thousand. I need a number that they're comfortable with. I need a customer list. I need a customer list for the past three years to say, here's our averages. You know, it doesn't, I just need something to start that number with because I...
Don't need names, you need numbers.
No, I just need numbers. I just need a good number.
You need numbers and then you also need the size of the container to that customer.
If that was available, that would be, that would help.
Right.
I mean, that would be beneficial. But in a minimum, total number of customers would at least start the num, would at least allow me to get the next level of detail out of this, out of this number set.
What else do you need?
Total tonnage? I mean, I got it from Washington County, but I want to confirm that the numbers are right. I mean, I want this based on, you know, I mean, I'm going to confirm the numbers with what I have, but provide me the tonnage that you bring from Forest Lake to Newport.
Okay.
So we know what the total tonnage goes on.
You said you already have that, though.
But I want to confirm your number. I mean, that's what I'm trying to...
You have it from, you have it from...
From Washington County. If you're finding me using, me using Washington County's reported numbers, I'll use those numbers and it's going to be the customer list.
Okay.
I'll go off of that.
Okay.
But then I don't want, all of a sudden during the next meeting, have you come back and say, that's not the right tonnage? Yeah, I'm using the Washington County numbers that were reported to Washington County. I don't know where those numbers came from. I got it from Washington County.
So do you just need to know that I've got a thousand customers who have a ninety-six gallon and a thousand customers that have a sixty-five gallon and a thousand customers that have a forty gallon?
If you give me the...
Do you want names and addresses? I'm not going to turn over names and addresses. That's proprietary information.
No, just give me, even if you gave me aggregate data, I can parse it out. I mean, I mean, just give me the numbers.
And if you, if you do have any kind of seasonal frequency, that would be helpful of Dan, too. I don't know if you keep that.
Because what I'm going to do...
I would assume you would, knowing your business.
We always have billing records, but it changes all the time.
And to account for the seasonal fluctuation, what I'll do is I'll average it out over twelve months. I'll take the total number that are there, average it out over twelve months to give an average customer base, average monotonous out there. Again, this isn't going to be the, you know, the two-week analysis, this is basically to get it close, to see if that number from Newport is accurate or not. It's basically based on numbers that we.
Then if we gather all this information and find out that what I've given you here is accurate, then what?
Then we have information we can make a more informed decision on. All we're really asking for is what should be included in your annual report, that I'm reading in your contract right here. I'd like you to be respectful, it'd be nice.
So if I understand it right, based on you providing that information to Dan, we would table this till that information is available, and then come back and do it again.
Thank you.
Move to table.
Do we have a second?
Second. Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Bailey, I think you're up with a motion for a tobacco license application.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor and council members, we received an application from William Shesinski Jr. for a tobacco license. Currently, there is a e-cigarette shop with a current license in the same location that was applied for and received last year in 2017. He was made notified that it is a non-transferable license, and he applied for his own. Based on the background investigation conducted by the Forest Lake Police Department, we are recommending denial of the license based on an existing felony conviction and a misspelled middle name on the application. And if Chief Peterson or Bridget wants to elaborate further on that, or if you have questions?
Chief, how do you have?
What's chief? I really don't have any, it's pretty clean-cut what seemed to happen here, and that there were some violations. I guess if you have any questions for me, or if Bridget wants to add any other further details for you, I welcome any questions that you may have, if you've had time to review the information.
Council, have any questions to the chief?
Permission to, we got a ton of documents just provided to us. Permission to perhaps just peruse these for just a few minutes, if we may?
Certainly, and if council would like, I'd be happy to kind of provide an overview, or if you want to read in silence, and then I can provide overview?
That'd be very helpful.
That'd be good.
So, the overview is as follows, as Bailey indicated, there was a license application that was received by the city. That's labeled as Exhibit A in your pocket. So Exhibit A is the license application that was submitted back on July thirteenth of this year. The license application includes a background check component, which the Forest Lake Police Department did conduct. And as part of that background check investigation, they did determine that Mr. Shesinski, the applicant, has a felony conviction for a felony fifth-degree controlled substance sale crime, so sale of a controlled substance. The offense date for that incident is back in 2016. However, he was not convicted until this January, that was his sentencing date. As the police department was doing their due diligence with respect to the background investigation, they noticed that on the application itself, the applicant spelled his middle name as J.O.E.S.P.H., so Joseph, but not common spelling. That spelling is repeated four times throughout the application. When the Forest Lake Police Department initially, and please correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but when they initially ran the background check using the spelling provided on the application, there was no criminal history found for the applicant. However, the applicant also provided a copy of his driver's license. The driver's license was issued in 2016. On the driver's license, the name Joseph is spelled J.O.S.E.P.H. And upon running the background check with that spelling off the driver's license, the felony conviction was found. I would note that the applicant submitted an application for a tobacco license back in 2017. That's what's found in Exhibit B. In Exhibit B, he spelled his middle name J.O.S.E.P.H., again, which is the same spelling as his license. So what you have is an application from this year with four misspellings, is how I'll categorize it, an application from 2017 with four correct spellings. And the difference between 2017 and 2018 is that felony conviction for a controlled substance crime. As Bailey indicated, these licenses are non-transferable. And if you may recall from last fall, as I outlined in the resolution, there had been an application initially submitted, again, by Mr. Shesinski, it was subsequently withdrawn, then there was an application submitted by the current license holder, and that's for Cloud X Vape, right? Billy's LLC is Cloud X Vapes, this one is for Cloud X Vape, that's the current license holder. They did renew their license in 2018 of this year. So there was a kind of a back and forth of who's going to be the entity holding the license. At the end of the day, Ms. Hughes is the registered agent, she's listed as the manager and the organizer for the LLC that holds the current tobacco license for that promises. My understanding is that the staff recommendation, which I've articulated in here, is a denial on several grounds, based on language found in the Forest Lake City Code related to applications for tobacco licenses. First is the providing of a fraudulent statement, a misstatement or a false statement in the application, based on the fact that the applicant misspelled his middle name, and that the result of that had due diligence not been completed by the police department would have been and the council not getting the full information about his felony conviction, that that is a material misstatement and grounds for denial of the application. Additionally, the city code does provide for convictions for criminal offenses that are involved or related to the business that is licensed or the type of activity that is licensed as a disqualifying grounds. As the council may know, there is a statute, which I included in your packet of materials, that deals with how cities and other licensing entities are supposed to approach these types of convictions. While the council has the right to deny an application for a conviction that is directly related to the type of license sought, there is a process by which an applicant can show that they have rehabilitated themselves. There are different factors that the council needs to look at, the severity of the offense, how long ago punishment was incurred, and its relationship to the license being sought. So just because you have a conviction, that does not automatically disqualify you from the license. But based on the type of business, which is, again, a tobacco retail establishment, which sells what is essentially a controlled substance, right? You cannot buy a nicotine-containing product unless you are over eighteen. It's the perspective of staff that that is a, there's a significant nexus between the criminal conviction and the type of business that's being licensed. Additionally, there has not been any information provided yet to the city that would essentially respond and show competent evidence of rehabilitation on behalf of the applicant. Next, the code does provide that you may deny a tobacco license if, based on the background investigation, granting a license would be a menace to the safety, health, welfare, morals and welfare of the public, or if the applicant is not of good moral character or for other good cause. So the resolution in front of the council does, is a resolution of denial. Ultimately, the council will have to vote on this, and the applicant should be given the opportunity to address the council and address this information if he or any of his representatives are here this evening. But that is the staff recommendation at this time, for all of the reasons listed in numbers one through eighteen.
Follow-up question, thank you, Bridget, that's incredibly helpful. The applicant was before council as part of the license renewal process, and help me to understand how the, I believe during that time, there were two offenses of selling to minors, and they'd failed perhaps two compliance checks, and I believe council voted on a three-two vote to renew the license. Help me to understand how that situation impacts the, the application that's before us today? Is it separate? Is it, help, just help me navigate that.
So Mayor members of the council, it's really a separate issue in the sense that the application before you today is for a new entity. So I think the best analogy would be, say, you've got, you know, a bar in town, and there's a lot of rowdy behavior, selling to minors, et cetera, and someone comes in and says, okay, I'm going to take over the bar, I'm going to buy the business, and I'm going to reopen it from, you know, bar A to bar B. So when the application comes in, you look at the applicant for the license when it's bar B. So yeah, it was kind of bad when it was managed by this other entity, but we have to look at this new applicant and see if there's any reason for denial, not just because it's had a history of bad things happening, but this is a new owner. So, long story short, you have to look at them individually. We did kind of look into, as part of the background check, any specific reported incidents that would tie the applicant to some of those illegal sales to minor, and there really wasn't a direct connection. In other words, the applicant wasn't the person who sold the tobacco to the underage purchaser back in December of 2017. So because there's not a direct connection that we were able to find, that isn't something that can be taken into account when determining his application.
Thank you.
It's still something that happened along the way, though. Sorry, you know, and I, and I recall that situation or two, and, and I was one of them that helped fight for this gentleman, you know, their entity, that tried to keep him in business, and there was some give or take on this whole thing, and, and then something like this comes up, and you go, boy, this is kind of a slap in the face about the whole thing. And it's for the sake of argument, I'd make a motion that we adopt the resolution denying the tobacco license application by William Joseph Shesinski, is that how you pronounce it? Junior for the Cloud X Vapes LLC, DBA, Cloud X Vapes.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, all in favor? Could be more discussion, excuse me, more discussion?
And, Your Honor, I don't know if there's anyone in the audience who is here on behalf of the applicant who wanted to speak this evening?
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this issue? No? Hearing none, any further discussion on, on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of denying the application, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Application's denied. Dan Undem, water rate study.
Mayor members of the council, back during August ninth, city council meeting, we brought forward two proposals for water rate studies for the water fund to take a look at the rates that we're currently charging to make sure that there is enough cash flow there to meet anticipated future needs for tower repair, repair to the treatment plants, et cetera. We looked at it, there was two, the two bids, one from AEM and one from Springstead. The AEM bid at that time was for thirteen thousand. We looked back at that bid, I did call back out to AEM, and the original bid they submitted was for both water and for sewer. So I did ask them, can you rebid that? Because I asked for just a, a water fund rate analysis from, from Springstead. AEM did come back with a quote, just strictly for the water fund, and that quote now was for seven thousand dollars. If you read through AEM's proposal, they do specify that if we want any additional analysis work done, they will charge an additional three thousand. So I did have a conversation with them about that, I said, what does that actually entail? I said, because I just want to make sure that, I want to keep options on the table for if we're going to bond forward, if we're going to use cash reserves for it, if we're going to cash flow the whole thing. And what they told me was basically, they look at our existing rate structure, or whatever rate structure we bring to them for analysis, and they'll work all the way through that rate structure. They'll run through different cash flow projections, they'll run through a bonding scenario, they'll incorporate everything that we want to incorporate through. It's at the moment we go to adoption, if all of a sudden we're like, well, what if we looked at it with a five-tier system or a six-tier system? Something that would substantially change that work, then that's where that extra three thousand would come in. So, assuming they're looking at just our current rate structure and making adjustments based on the current rate structure, that seven thousand would be the fee that they would charge. However, if all of a sudden we want to look at, you know, kind of making an additional rate structure change or something pretty substantially different, then they would charge that additional work. Because again, they'd have to go back to all their models and re-update all their modeling. But based on this, between the price difference between AEM and Springstead, now that they're, you know, in the same ballpark as each other, from a staff's perspective, AEM is a little bit more turnkey, considering they're already doing the finance structure work for the city, they're already familiar with a lot of the numbers that are there. I think that the spin-up time on AEM would be a little bit less than Springstead. However, I think both would deliver quality products and get us the right numbers that we would need at the end of the day. I just think Springs, or AEM is a little bit more, just from a staff's perspective, a little bit more, kind of hand the project over to them, and they can kind of run with it. Because they already kind of had established relationship with the, with the staff members who are currently managing the rates within the city. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did Springstead provide a similar adjustment if we wanted to restructure things?
You know, Springstead was just for the sixty-five, they didn't go through that if you wanted to restructure. I believe they go after, you know, again, this is the straight, you know, they take our current rate structure and adjust it out. Again, if you wanted to make substantial changes at the time, just from a council's perspective, if you're entertaining additional rates, or you want to change, make substantial changes to the rate tiers, is to do that prior to engaging in the actual analysis work. Because that way, they'll know what they're going to analyze, you know, do the analysis on. However, if we go in with our current rate structure, we have the backup data to say, you know, we know we're billing this much on each rate structure with the new rates, here's what we would have, you know, we have a little bit more. I think your projections are going to be better if we use our current rate structure, which I haven't heard a lot of complaints on the current rate structure, it's just the number, the numbers that we charge in that structure need to be adjusted, not the actual tier system itself.
Ryan, are you familiar with our rate structure?
Three tiers.
Do you have any issue with continuing on a three-tier system?
For the, for the purpose of the study, I would recommend just staying with your existing data. Otherwise, you're trying to recreate stuff that might not exist, or stuff like that, so.
It becomes apples to oranges.
Right. At the end of the day, they're both those suggest a rate increase.
Do you have any experience with either firm?
Worked with both, I mean, obviously in-house with the existing staff, they know what we have and what they have, so, you know, it's worked well, but.
One more question for you, are you, are you comfortable, this additional scenario when you're looking for a study? The additional scenario of three thousand dollars seems a little vague. Are you comfortable that we can get through what we need with that base rate?
I think you should just analyze the base rates, so it keeps things simple.
Yep.
Because at the end of the day, it's going to show you need to do an increase, right? And then you're going to have to, we'll have to tackle that conversation moving forward. If you start throwing in other variables in there, it's only going to make that number higher.
And I think to speak on Ryan's point, when I talked to AEM about that, they kind of were just, the reason why that was included in there is if all of a sudden you get to the end, you look at our current rate structure, a pretty substantial rate increase, some councils may want to go back and say, what if we made it a four-tier or a five-tier? How would that impact that big increase? They're saying at that point, they would incur that extra three thousand. However, as we're going through, staff will be engaged with AEM and kind of direct how that analysis will work, you know. So I think we're going to end up developing a product that'll be, that'll work, and I don't anticipate needing an extra three thousand.
Dan, what kind of timeline did they give you to complete the study?
Both, I believe, had six to eight weeks on it, so they both line up with a rate analysis in about mid to late October, you know, which is in line with what we looked at, bringing back those enterprise funds for council discussion.
And the AEM proposal included the analysis for water access charges, correct?
I did not confirm that, but I will confirm that with them. I believe, I believe it does, but I can double-check on that.
I guess question, I mean, maybe question for staff, that is a require, a request of ours as part of this proposal, correct? We want that to be part of the analysis?
Yep, because that's one of your mechanisms for funding your water.
It's one of the levers, yep, okay.
And I can scope that out with, if AEM is selected, I can make sure that's part of that seven thousand dollar scope. Again, they, when I talked to the, to Jean from AEM, she did kind of say, they would work with staff to kind of design what that modeling would look like, and if we're asking for those access charges as well, we can make sure that's incorporated in the scoping of the actual analysis work that we're doing.
I'll make the motion of both staff's recommendation for AEM, the water study.
I'll second.
We have a motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Fee schedule amendment for small wireless facility permits, Donovan is not here.
I am going to play my best Donovan tonight, so this is actually kind of a procedural formality that we need to address tonight. So as part of the comprehensive right-of-way ordinance that was considered, I believe in July, in the July workshop, that ordinance amendment did envision some additional fees to be considered as part of that ordinance. I believe they're listed in the packet, they're the minor excavation, the major excavation work, an obstruction permit, and the small wireless facility permit. We had anticipated having that ordinance repaired, prepared for this evening's meeting. However, we did not get that work completed, so we did notice this for a public hearing for the fee schedule. So what we're recommending is basically staying this until the September tenth meeting and do the, the public hearing for the fee schedule adoption at the same time that we are considering the comprehensive right-of-way adoption. So we don't have fees that are considered, that we don't actually have an ordinance behind. So more of a procedural exercise this evening.
That's correct, Mayor members of the council, so the goal or the request for council would be to table the discussion in the public hearing on this, continue the public hearing out to September tenth, I want to say, is the next.
I'll confirm.
I believe it's September tenth is the next council meeting, yes. Yes, September tenth.
I guess I should ask, is there anybody here that wants to speak to that? An item on the agenda? No, hearing none, we can skip the public hearing part?
Or just table?
So.
I make a motion, we table the agenda item as well as the public hearing to the September tenth meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Next, we have the city administrator contract, Bridget.
Thank you, Your Honor, Mayor members of the council, acting mayor members of the council, we do have before you for consideration this evening, an employment agreement between the city and Patrick Casey for service as the city administrator. This draft employment agreement was circulated to the council via email previously. It was a result and at the direction of council to engage in negotiations with Mr. Casey regarding the parameters of his employment. It is modeled after and takes into account a number of the provisions that were included in the previous city administrator contract, some of the requested changes that Mr. Casey made, and also some recommended provisions from the League of Minnesota Cities Model Contract. To tee it up, it would have Mr. Casey beginning employment with the city on October seventeenth of 2018. It does establish his base salary, his vacation and sick leave, as well as cell phone allowance, monthly vehicle allowance, dues and subscriptions, potential moving allowance, and related terms and conditions. So I would certainly stand open for any questions that the council may have regarding the draft contract before you this evening.
I do have one question, I realize the start date would be October seventeenth. Can he weigh in on anything, particularly our budget prior to that, if he so chooses?
Mayor members of the council, I guess if the question is if you want to include him, you know, you could send him some emails, but he's not working, he can't be part of the, that process. If there's informational updates.
It would be nice to keep him in the loop, seeing as we're heading into the budget.
Absolutely, you could certainly send him information for him to be advised of what's going on.
So he could, even though he's not technically an employee, he's privy to our information?
Provided that it's not non-public data. So anything that's confidential or private data, he could not have access to.
Things that are public.
Yes, absolutely.
Keep him in the loop.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
He gets to work two jobs.
What's that?
He gets to work two jobs for a period.
Exactly, exactly. We'll see how ambitious he is.
So I guess I would say, just kick off conversation here, the, we are on the top end of what I am comfortable with from a vacation perspective. I understand we are compensating for a employee with a wealth of experience, and so we are giving credit for those years of experience. In my mind, I discount that, for I think we also have a very reasonable starting pay, and so those two balance out in my perspective. So I am comfortable as proposed, I just wanted to make that point of, yes, it's a rich vacation plan, however, I think we're also coming in at a very reasonable rate, especially given, given experience of where we were with our previous administrator and compensation of our previous administrator. So I'm. So, I'm comfortable making that trade. Seems like that was the trade that was, or the negotiating item that was agreed upon between Bridgette and Mr. Casey.
Well, it is certainly within the boundaries of what we had talked about, and although it is a little bit on the higher side of it, but it's certainly, nothing extraordinary, I don't think.
Bridgette, I see in here the, there was an amount of three thousand dollars towards moving relocation expense. Was there an offer made to him? I think we discussed whether or not we wanted to give him a little bonus if he located in Forest Lake. Was that discussed at all?
Mayor members of the council, yes, that was part of the conversation I had with Mr. Casey. It is my understanding in speaking with him that he does have a residence already established in the metropolitan area, and so he was not at that point, at this point when I spoke with him, interested in any additional incentive to move up to the city.
But the offer was made.
The offer was made, yes, it was.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the employment agreement with Patrick Casey.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the employment agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, we make the call this evening. Last thing on the agenda is Winnick's supply invoices. He doesn't have to abstain tonight.
I'd make a motion that we pay the Winnick's supply invoices.
Second.
We have a motion to pay the invoices in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, staff updates. Where should we start? I'll just start on the end.
Mayor member of the council, on August twenty-third, we had our latest joint fire board meeting. At that meeting, we discussed the five-year CIP plan, and we also discussed small rate increase for paid-on-call firefighters. During this meeting and discussing with Wyoming, who was part of the joint fire board, we came up with the five-year replacement plan that addressed the issue of our issue with our tender, and I think that it was a fair agreement, and I think it's something that I, the fire department looks forward to moving ahead with. That's all I had, if you have any other questions for me.
No. Just the agreement was to stretch that out a bit.
Correct. But actually put a year for vehicle replacement for each type of apparatus coming up.
Thank you. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor and city council members, I have a couple of items for you. This Wednesday, we're going to be having a back-to-school pizza party with Public Safety, Wednesday, five-thirty to six-thirty, might go a little bit later than that, but inviting any community members, students, or anyone that wants to come here at the Forest Lake City Center, up at the community room. We'll be there to answer any questions for them, since they're going to be going back to school next week, and any safety concerns or anything that they have for us. So, I invite any and all community members. Secondly, today, I gave two police officer hiring process for an update, conditional offers of employment, pending a medical and psychological exam, which will be set up for next week. So, I'm hoping on the next, very soon, one of the city council members, or city council meetings, that I will be able to present those individuals to you. And then, I had one other item, and I can't remember what it was. Oh, I know what it was, the storms that came through. Unless Chief Newman had any other updates or calls, a lot of branches and leaves and things like that. Fortunately for us, it looks like the storm went north and south of us. I did hear some, a little bit more damage, southern Washington County, and then northern Chisago, and definitely in Pine, Pine County, they got hit pretty hard. So, hopefully, there are no injuries up there, but it looks like it passed us, just with some, some higher winds and some rainfall, but nothing real serious.
We dodged a bullet.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Bailey?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Dan?
A quick reminder that I know early on in this year, we talked about fee schedule changes and some simplifications to the fee schedule. Just want the council to know that has not been forgotten about it. We are going to bring that forward. I think from a sequencing perspective, it makes sense to bring it forward as we do the 2019 fee schedules, so we're not doing an amendment and then doing another adoption. So, we're just combine that all, just from a, from a ease of, you know, procedure there. We also have the last arts in the park tomorrow performance, you have the Rockin' Hollywoods and the Community Corn Feed going on at Lake Side Memorial Park, so last one of the year, so it is that time of year where school is right around the corner. And speaking of school, we will, every year, we do put out on the sign out front, just a reminder for all residents to drive safely as the buses go through the first couple days of school. So, I will get that sign out on the message board again, starting next Tuesday, which is the first day of school.
Chief Peterson, do you do anything on the first day of school special for traffic control?
For traffic, yeah. It's kind of all hands on deck, where quite a few of us are out there at each one of the schools. Just, you know, showing our presence, letting, you know, the kids know that, hey, we're police officers, and, you know, we're the good guys, so if you have questions or concerns, you know, definitely come to see us. The school resource officers are, of course, there greeting everybody, along with myself and Captain Weiss, and a sergeant or two. And we do assist with traffic control, and we definitely monitor that at the schools, and especially this year with the remodels and some new traffic with the buses coming in. There's an increase with the buses coming into the new Forest Lake Area Middle School, and then, of course, the Forest Lake Area High School as well.
Great, thank you. Bridgette?
Thank you, no updates.
Ryan?
Council members, I got a few items to update. Just a friendly reminder, the Stormwater Tour and Workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, September eleventh. If you want to obtain a tenant, you're required to register by September fifth. I do have that information here, I can forward to Dan if you're interested, but it's four PM to seven-thirty PM. Be a tour of some of the projects ongoing, and then a dinner followed by others, discussion. So, that's moving forward. And then, just also, to provide some updates, at the intersection of Highway ninety-seven and North Shore Trail, Mindot will be making some traffic control changes there the next few weeks that include upgrading the size of the right turn lanes, signs, sizes, adding fluorescent yellow headers, and then adding large flags to the signposts for sixty days. And also just note that Mindot is making progress on the layout and project delivery scheduled for a project programmed in two thousand and twenty.
Ryan, could you, I previewed an update on ninety-seven bridge. I saw some comments on one of the websites, a lot of the people are asking, what's the completion date? Is it on schedule? Where are we at? Or don't you know?
Which project?
The bridge, ninety-seven.
Oh, here?
Over thirty-five.
That completion date's like October of nineteen, so they're kind of been concentrating on Highway ninety-seven in the north, on the roads. Obviously, we're building the bridges as we're going. Thirty-five W flyover is being constructed, and, you know, with, along with traffic, the Highway ninety-seven twenty-three bridge is just constructing the north half of the bridge until next year, when we'll have some more traffic control changes, but.
Will the one side be open this year yet or not?
It'll, it'll be as-is, and they'll continue work on just the north side until probably after winter, unless we see something in the winter or.
I just saw them grading the road that's going to, I presume, be, I don't know if that's a temporary road that's going in there, or that's going to be the permanent road that's off to the north of ninety-seven in Columbus, right across from the gas station. Looks like it's going to line up with the new bridge.
So, okay, you're on the west side of the freeway.
Yep.
So, Anoka County is also doing a realignment of County Road fifty-four, which will bring a roundabout up to Highway twenty-three. And part of an agreement that they've planned with City of Columbus is to provide access to that northwest parcel, so you'll see it stubbed.
Yeah, jogging off to the.
So, there will be a road back there, yes.
Okay. I was just curious to what's going on there. Thank you.
One more thing, I, you know, I just looked this up on the city's website, just to address Ronan Elvin's questions that I hear, you know, maybe some city staff could print this off for you, but there is a nice description of what the service water management fee is. Also identifies a number of items it's used to fund. And then, in two thousand and sixteen, it, line by line, addressed where it went and how much it cost. Obviously, we have seventeen expenditures, so we could probably update the website to include that. A large portion, or bulk of some of the heavyweight stuff is your contract sweep sweeping. Every suite, every street in Forest Lake gets swept twice a year, fall and spring, and then a lot of it's pure maintenance, culvert replacements, culvert jetting. I know twenty-five thousand from this fund's been added to the street fund because of the amount of stormwater work that has to be corrected, even though we're spending well more than twenty-five thousand, but, you know, that's going out of the street fund too. So, a large list of projects, so if somebody at city staff could print that off, you guys could view that, and you could see where some of that funds are going towards, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ryan.
One more, maybe quick point of clarification. I believe the changes that Mindot made to Highway ninety-seven and North Shore Trail is a result of some, some resident outreach that they had had. Can you maybe elaborate a little bit more on, this was kind of a reactionary move to them, and so maybe kudos to residents who reached out, and kudos to Mindot for listening.
So, short-term changes here, obviously, a lot of people got in the ears of Mindot. I can't, I've just had so many emails coming so fast of the responses Mindot back to residents, I just saved them in a separate folder. Thus, Mindot has gathered resources and are making a change here to address short-term things or try to improve the safety. In the long term, we have a project programmed, and we're moving forward with that and the layout, and, you know, coincidence, Dan and I have been talking with Mindot prior to the last unfortunate situation. Obviously, positive thing, you hope that reinforces funding for that project in twenty, and that would include a designated left turn lane. And I heard some questions out in the audience before the meeting tonight. It would provide lighting at the intersection, not full corridor lighting, but intersection lighting, and separate all the driving lanes, so it'd be a dozen left turn lane, right turn lane, and much needed improvement, so good news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Myra?
Just a quick, just, no real update, I just want to say, Dan, thank you for all of the analysis and work on this SRC contract. You're going above and beyond what's on the Call of Duty, and it's a service that's probably not going to be much appreciated, but it's appreciated by us, so thank you.
Like, enough at this time.
Sam?
The only thing, I just had a comment for Chief Peterson about a program that they have. My grandkids got tickets the other day for doing the right thing. They were wearing their helmets, and they went and got a free ice cream cone, and what a great program. It really is, because now they're really pumped about this whole thing, because one of the kids that was there didn't get the ticket, and so now they're like, you know, why? You know, so it's a great program.
So, when they start driving, they're going to go for tickets, is that?
Yeah, but for the right reason, for the right reasons. So, other than that, I didn't have anything else. It was just too much going on last week, so.
Thank you. I have no update. We've had so many meetings, and I think I'm updated out, so, right now.